Good evening. It is now 6:30 PM, and we ask that you please stand for the invocation to be given by Senior Chaplain Jamelle McKenzie with our Henry County Police Department, and then please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, everyone. Let us pray. Our everlasting, wise, and loving Father, on behalf of all of those of us that are gathered here today, we just want to say thank you. Thank you for your abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself. Thank you for giving us the measure of health that each of us has, and that is enabling us to be able to fulfill our callings. We thank you for substance. We thank you for friendship. We thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work, and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. We also thank you for the freedom to embrace you, or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. And therefore, today, I pray for this Board of Commissioners. I pray first for our Chairman and all of the Commissioners. I pray, we pray for the different levels of officials that are here, and that are assembled in this Commission meeting today. We pray for understanding. We pray that you, that we will hear your voice, and in the decision-making process, that we look beyond ourselves and our own agendas, and look at what is good for the county, the city, the county of Henry. So we ask today for wisdom to govern among the conflicting interests and the issues of our times. We also ask for a sense of the welfare and the true needs of the people that are the citizens of this county. We pray for a keen thirst for justice and righteousness. We pray for confidence in what is good and fitting. We pray for the ability that we can all work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement, that we can learn to agree to disagree. We also pray for the personal peace in the lives of our leaders that are here, and those that are not here today, and in the lives of the people that are the citizens of this county. I pray today for the agenda that has been set before us. We pray for an assurance that what would please you, and what would benefit those who live and work in around our beloved Henry County, will be accomplished. And it is in your most blessed name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The meeting of today's, tonight's Board of Commissioners meeting is now hereby called to order. We do have one announcement, and it is that the planning and zoning item, which was advertised for this meeting, has been withdrawn by the applicant, and then that planning and zoning item is MC-1802, ESS Properties 114, which is, was requesting a modification to zoning conditions for property located at 5484 Flakes Mill Road in District 5. Again, that zoning item has been withdrawn by the applicant. At this time, are there any other revisions or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, we call for a motion to accept the agenda as amended by removing the planning and zoning item that was just read.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or thoughts or concerns? All in favor? Any opposed? It was a unanimous approval of the amended agenda. There are no consent agenda items for this evening, so we will move now into our public hearings. The very first public hearing that we have is coming from our Community Development Department, and it is a resolution approving the proposed FY 2017 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, and also for the Community Development Block Grant Program, and authorizing submittal to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. And we thank Ms. Shannon Senor for being here to make that presentation.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Your Community Development Department, as mentioned, has prepared a FY 2017 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. This report is required mandated annually for submission to HUD. First, the report has to be prepared and presented for review for the community at large. The report has been on public display for the last 30 days. The display of the ad was advertised in the Henry Daily Herald, meeting our consolidated citizens' review requirements. Staff published the notice in the Sunday, August 18th, or 19th edition of the newspaper, and copies were made available throughout the county. No comments have been received. In summary, 26 single-family owner-occupied low-to-moderate-income households received housing rehab assistance. This assistance includes not only the rehab itself, but also septic tank repair and replacement, so that is interior and exterior improvements to homes. There have been five public service activities that were completed utilizing the funds. For example, this includes services to our homeless, health and medical services, youth services, and then there were three public facility improvement projects completed, and 26 public, 36, excuse me, 36 public housing units were modernized, using a total of $1.5 million. This one, excuse me, $1.1 million. This $1.1 also includes administration costs, our fair housing services, in addition to those particular activities that were carried out by contractors and/or public service agencies that I've discussed for you, as far as given the numbers of those activities. All of these specifics have been documented in the CAPER report, and as mentioned, they've been made available for public review. They are also on the county website. What we present for you this evening is for your approval for submission to HUD. The report is due the latter part of this month. This is a public hearing, and I also am happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board before we begin the public hearing? I just had one.
Certainly.
Related to the homeless person overnight shelters. Can you expand on that? I see that we had a projection, I think of 670, and actually provided for 696.
Yes, ma'am. Please note that these services are provided through our partners, the non-profits. Specifically, that is Haven House and a Friends House. In receiving these funds, the agencies propose how many individuals they anticipate serving. Typically, that is based on historical data. So I don't recall the numbers that you just mentioned, but what we propose is based on what they initially give us in the development of our contracts, and at the end of the year, they also submit reports in which we base our actual accomplishments on.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Clements?
Ms. Shannon, we, actually, I was looking at the one year ago of the number of households that were supported under the rehab program, and I know we walked several months ago into the Hampton community about them being a part of that rehab, and it was 124, and then the actual 37, and it looks like the total ended up being 70. What happens to those funds when we project at 124? Do we get to do that again, and hopefully meet those goals, or do we lose those dollars? What happens with that?
No funding has been lost. In particular, this activity for housing rehab. There was another partner that we had anticipated working with initially, that was $150,000 allocated for that activity. Those funds were reprogrammed in our 2018 Annual Action Plan, as that activity was not able to be carried out in 2017.
So the process of including those houses in District 2 in that program that we actually worked and looked at the projects for that community?
We have not received a proposal or any-
So it needs to come from the City of Hampton?
Yes, ma'am, and we can discuss that further, but yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we haven't missed the opportunity?
We have not missed an opportunity. However, the 2018 Annual Action Plan has already been approved, and those funds have been allocated, but we can certainly discuss future allocations.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Are there any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. This is a public hearing, and therefore, anyone wishing to speak on this matter, this resolution this evening, will have a total of three minutes each to speak. So we do now ask that, would you please come forward if you would like to speak regarding the resolution that has just been presented from the Community Development Block Grant? Calling again. Is there anyone wishing to speak regarding the resolution regarding this proposal regarding the Community Development Block Grant? Hearing none, seeing none. This now concludes our public hearing. Are there any other questions or comments from the board before we call for a motion? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Chair, I would like to move that we approve the CAPER, and authorize the execution of the report to HUD.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Are there any further discussions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous approval. So thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for the work that is being done here.
Thank you.
We're now moving to our next Planning and Economic Development Public Hearings. As previously stated, item MC-1802, which was ESS Properties 114, who were requesting a modification to zoning conditions for property located at 5484 Flakes Mill Road in District 5, was removed from the agenda by the applicant. So therefore, we'll move into the next public hearing, which is RZ-1401, which is Meredith Homes requesting a rezoning from RA to R3 for property located at 354 Wilson Drive in District 3. And we'll ask Mr. Stacy Jordan-Rudisil to make that presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Good evening.
So the case before you tonight is located on Wilson Road, and it's displayed on the overhead and also in your exhibit books. To give you a context of where we are, this rectangular location is the subject property. It's located on Wilson Road in the vicinity of North Ola and Highway 81. This property is zoned RA, residential-agricultural, and the original request was to be rezoned from RA to R3, single-family residence. The future land use map, and again, the subject property is here, hatched light in the, in the green. This yellow color indicates a low-density residential between one and two dwelling units per acre net. This request came before the Zoning Advisory Board in March of 2014, and the Zoning Advisory Board recommended denial. There was a hearing held before the Board of Commissioners in August of 2015, and the Board of Commissioners declined to approve. This case proceeded through litigation, resulting in a remand back to the Board of Commissioners, and this is why we're having the hearing tonight. Staff had originally recommended approval of the request with several conditions. In the meantime, the zoning ordinance has been amended to allow for an R2S, which is R2 on sewer. The original request of the applicant was to develop up to 19 lots, with a minimum lot size of 18,000 square feet, which is a typical R3 development. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Not just time, I don't.
Okay. Okay. So we'll proceed with the public hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So at this time, this is a public hearing, and persons wishing to speak in favor of this request, which includes the applicant, will have a collective time of 10 minutes to present. Likewise, those who are wishing to speak in opposition will be given a collective time of 10 minutes as well. So at this time, we are asking anyone who's wishing to speak in favor, including the applicant, to please come forward. Again, there will be a collective of 10 minutes included in this time. And as you approach, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Newton Galloway, on counsel for Meredith Homes. I'm sorry, is that better?
Just a little bit, yes.
Okay. Newton Galloway, on behalf of Meredith Homes, I'm counsel. My address is 406 North Hill Street in Griffin, 30223. And we were here back in 2015. I'm going, I want to do two preliminary things first. Number one, I will not need 10 minutes, so if we, if it's possible, I'd like to reserve a little bit of time to come back and possibly respond to comments. And just for purposes of perfecting a record, I want to restate the constitutional objection that we had posed back in 2015 to the existing zoning classification. Subject to that, the staff's report is exactly on point, and we received a staff recommendation today that proposes to allow this property to go to R2S, and we support the staff's recommendation, and can live with the staff's recommendation with two suggested and urged modifications. And I'm looking at the resolution, the draft resolution or proposed resolution that we received from staff today, and in item number two, or condition number two, we would ask that the second sentence begins with cement fiber board be deleted, and we would agree in return for that to a minimum square footage of the houses that would exceed 2,000 square feet. Initially, that was the initial proposal for the size of the houses, and that is still the proposal for the size of the houses. The goal was to exceed the square footage requirement under either R3, or now under R2S. As staff reported, this has been in litigation, and during the pendency of the litigation, you adopted R2S. And again, looking at R2S, and looking at the application of R2S to this property, we view that as a reasonable zoning classification to be put on there, without waiving the fact that we have always asserted that R3 was appropriate. So I just want to make it clear, we're not giving up anything in the litigation, but we can live with R2S. So, subject to the modification of the staff's conditions, as I've discussed, we would urge you to approve the rezoning, and again, we can agree to the R2S classification. And Commissioners, that's all I have. We appreciate your time. This has been a long and interesting zoning action, but the R2S is the ability to be able to bring this, bring this zoning application and these issues to conclusion. Thank you. I am happy to answer any questions if you'd like.
Well, we're continuing in the public hearing, so we'll see if there's anyone wishing to speak in favor, and allow you to come back.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, hearing none. We will now move into those wishing to speak in opposition. Again, there will be a collective total of 10 minutes for anyone wishing to speak in opposition. If you would like to speak, please do come forward now. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward now. Hearing none, this will conclude our public hearing, and at this time, we'll invite the applicant back, and see if there are any questions or comments from the board.
Madam Chair, one thing, I did want to introduce my associate, Stephen Jones, who's here with us, and Mr. Wesley, who is the shareholder and owner of Meredith Homes, is here as well.
All right.
I meant to do that at the first, and forgot.
That's okay. Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Barm, I think you had some, some comments.
I have some questions for you. First of all, before we get into that, Stacy, would you kind of explain to us about the state law, about the sewer?
It's my understanding, and it may not be a perfect understanding, that if a development is within a certain statutory distance of an existing sewer line, that it's required to tap in.
We have resolved that issue, that they do have to hook the sewer. I mean, there's no question about that.
It's my understanding that we have. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Barm, the, the distance that they have to be within is 2,000 feet. So if a development, or it's within 2,000 feet of a sewer line, the Henry County Water Authority and the regulations require they tie into it.
It does meet the requirements of the R2S.
Yes. They meet the requirement of having to tie into sewer, and R2S will provide these zoning regulations to require the sewer.
Okay. I do have a couple of questions about the conditions, and I'd like to go through and see if we can make some minor adjustments. On number one, I'd like to strike where feasible out, because these lots are going to be 115 feet wide, and there shouldn't be any reason why we can't have the side entrance garages.
Commissioner Barm, that's fine.
Okay. All right. And I am in agreement to strike that second sentence. And then I would like to add a third condition, and this one I want to ask you. Would y'all be in a table to go on 2,200 on the square footage?
Commissioner Barm, that's fine.
Okay. So the other four is fine. The rest of them are fine. So I'm ready to make a motion to deny the R3, but recommend approval of R2 with the amended conditions.
Okay. We've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Are there any other questions or comments? And again, the modifications are noted for the record as well. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to deny R3 and approve R2?
R2S.
R2, R2S, thank you. Okay, I think that's all hands. Anyone wishing to deny? Okay, the resolution has been passed, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, we will now move into our next public hearing, which is a, by Mandalay Properties, requesting a zoning from RA to R4 for property located at 100 Coulter Woods, and this is in District 1. And we'll ask Ms. Julie Yoder to make that presentation.
Good evening, Chair, and Commissioners.
Good evening.
The applicant is requesting to rezone this property from RA, residential-agricultural, to R4, single-family residence, for the purpose of developing single-family homes. The future land use for this property and the surrounding properties designated in orange is medium density, which allows 2 to 3.6 dwelling units per net acre. For some context, this property is located just outside the city limits of Locust Grove, near the entrance to the Coulter Woods subdivision, which is within the city, which is everything shown in pink on the overhead. The applicant would like to divide this one lot into three, and build a single-family home on each. At the Zoning Advisory Board meeting, the applicant stated that the houses would be similar to those within the Coulter Woods subdivision. On July 12, 2018, the Zoning Advisory Board recommended approval of this rezoning with three conditions. At this meeting, the applicant expressed their willingness to comply with said conditions. Staff took to the Zoning Advisory Board a recommendation of approval with one condition, which was included in the Zoning Advisory Board's motion. With that being said, I'd be happy to take any questions you have, and I'll have the conditions listed on the overhead.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the board before we begin the public hearing?
No questions.
Okay. Well, this is a public hearing, and as well for this one, persons wishing to be heard in favor, including the applicant, will have a collective total of 10 minutes to speak, and also those that wishing to speak in opposition will be granted a total of 10 minutes. So at this time, we invite up the applicant and anyone else who's wishing to speak in favor of this zoning matter.
Good evening, board. I'm Kevin Port with Mandalay Properties, 1017 Laurel Ridge Drive in McDonough. And as was mentioned, we're looking to rezone this Lot 1. It is, Lot 1 is inside of Henry County, whereas Lot 2 through 20, through 31 are inside the city of Locust Grove. And we were looking to rezone this one in order that we might be able to subdivide it, to be more conforming with the remainder of the lots in the subdivision. The builder that's currently in there would like to build the same homes that he's building on the other lots on. And I believe Lot, I believe R4 would allow us to meet all his, the conditions that they're doing in Locust Grove now.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Calling again. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Seeing none and hearing none, we will now grant a total of 10 minutes to anyone wishing to speak in opposition. Again, anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. Hearing none, this now concludes our public hearing. We now invite the applicant to come back, and then we'll allow the board to answer or ask any questions that may be of interest. I think Commissioner Wilson, you had some comments.
Yes, sir. I think you answered. You said the builder, the current builder in there is going to be building these three homes as well.
They're currently building, and those are between, most of them are 18, 1850 to 1900 square feet.
Okay. So they're, they're all look the same throughout the subdivision?
Yeah, it'd be the same, brick requirements, like the city of Locust Grove is requiring in there. They'd like to do that. And the, one note on there, I believe, on, we were, the verbiage on all disturbed areas to be sodded. If we could, we've had a little bit of trouble with that in the past, with it, with it worded quite like that. It doesn't allow for shrubbery and pine straw around the homes, or tree islands in the front yards. We do have a tree ordinance, so we've had inspectors enforce it to the T in the past, where we had to sod everything that, that we had disturbed.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure. Dante, can you help us out with what type of, how could we reword that for the sodded?
Sure. You could add language that reads somewhere in the context of all disturbed areas on the lot shall be sowed, except where there's landscaping or existing, or shrubs planted.
Okay. So we can just change the verbiage in that, that'd be fine?
Yes.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Prince?
I actually have a question for the county attorney, and I apologize, I didn't realize who these people were. I do a lot of work in Coulter Woods, surveying, and I don't know if I'm going to be doing these site plans or not. Should I recuse myself?
The law would call for you to recuse yourself if you have a financial interest in this project.
And I don't know.
If you don't have a financial interest in this project, you're not necessarily recused as a matter of law. If you're not sure, the safe thing to do would be to recuse yourself, so you don't inadvertently run afoul of the conflict of interest rules.
I'm going to recuse myself. I'd rather err on the side of caution. Apologize, I didn't realize.
It was.
Okay. So are there any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none. The floor is now open for a motion, and again, it was noted that the final bullet there did have a modification to it regarding the landscaping- the landscaping and so forth, so we've got that noted. So the floor is now open for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the new condition of, with the language of the disturbed sewer with the sotted area.
And I can say it's a regular flag. That'll be an amendment to condition number three, and it'll state, "All disturbed areas on the lot shall be sotted except where landscaping is present or installed."
Okay, thank you. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, so we have five in favor and one that recused themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Barm.
Okay. All right. We'll now move into our next planning and zoning item, which is RZ 1811, which is Rex Road, Henry 52 LLC, requesting a rezoning from R2 to RA for property located on Rex Road in District 5.
Good evening again, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Commissioners. The subject property before you tonight is illustrated on the overhead and also in your exhibit books. It's outlined in green. To give you some context of where we are, this is East Atlanta Road here, the four-way stop with Rex Road, and this is the county line. So in the curve of the road on the south side of Rex Road, this is the subject property that we're talking about. And this property has approximately 51 acres. It's zoned R2. Staff was not able to find a file for this subject property, so therefore, we have no record of any zoning conditions whatsoever. Future land use map calls for low-density residential, which would support developments up to two dwelling units per acre net. The applicant submitted a survey for the subject property, which is something that we require as far as having a complete application. They didn't have a site plan because they're not proposing any development at all. They simply wish to revert back from R2 to RA, residential agricultural. But from the survey, you may notice that some of the streets were begun, and it's my understanding that there may be some curbs that were, curb and gutter that were constructed at the time, but I understand that the streets were never put in. So this is a property that began construction but was simply left in an undeveloped state. Staff had recommended approval of the applicant's request to revert back to RA. The zoning advisory board held a meeting on July the 26th, and they did recommend denial of the applicant's request, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the board before we begin the public hearing? Okay. Well, again, this is a public hearing, and at this time, we'll ask the applicant to come forward, and anyone else wishing to speak in favor will be granted a total of 10 minutes collectively, and afterwards, those wishing to speak in opposition will be given a total of 10 minutes. So if you could come forward and state your name, please, for the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Dale Hall. I'm with Falcon Design Consultants, speaking on behalf of the applicant, Rex Road, Henry 52 LLC. We support staff's recommendation of approval for the request. As indicated in the staff report, the request will have minimum effects on the surrounding property owner and will assist in preserving the rural character of the community. Our client does not have any development plans for this project at this time, and therefore wishes to down-zone the property to RA. I would be more than willing to answer any questions you may have later about this request.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Again, calling anyone else wishing to speak in favor regarding this zoning matter. We now will grant a total of 10 minutes to anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this zoning. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. Hearing none, this now concludes our public hearing. We'll now invite the applicant to come forward and again, address any questions that the board may have. So are there any questions from the board? Commissioner Prince?
I had a question. Did you say that the zoning advisory board denied this request?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments? From the board. Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move into our public comment section of our agenda today, and this is the time that we allow citizens to voice their county-related concerns and opinions, which are not listed on the agenda. And again, all persons wishing to speak must sign in with the county clerk and complete the public comment speaker form prior to the meeting. So at this time, do we have any public comments for this evening?
Chair, we have one person signed up, Joseph Wheeler.
Okay. Mr. Joseph Wheeler. Thank you.
Madam Chair, distinguished members of the Henry County Board of Commissioners and the Henry County officials, citizens of Henry County, I'm Reverend Joseph Wheeler. I'm the vice president for National Action Network for Henry and Clayton County. I reside at 1312 Hollenbeck Lane, Riverdale, Georgia. I've come to address you tonight just to make you aware that we are, we've looked at the EEO 4 report for some of the departments in Henry County, and we met with the chief of police and the assistant, as well as the deputy county manager. We're concerned about some of the disparities we found in the EEO 4 report, and you know, that's the Equal Employment Opportunity Report for the citizens, who may not know. We looked at the numbers, we looked at the demographics here in Henry County. At the last census, African-Americans made up 39 percent, and we're about to count again, which tells us that that number has gone up significantly. What we're concerned about is the integrity of our police department and our fire department and other departments serving the citizens of Henry County. As I said, there are some disparities that we are concerned about, and after speaking with the chief and the deputy county manager, we feel good that there's some effort to look at these disparities. However, we want to know how we can move forward to address them. We knew that, we learned that the salary for police officers was kind of low, and that there was an effort to increase that, to attract more applicants. Of course, you know that when we have the right composition in our police and fire departments, we have, I would think, a better respect for the department. I think we'll have more integrity, and I think we'll have probably less problem than what we are seeing across the nation with police brutality and so on and so forth. So as a civil rights leader, working here in Clayton and Henry, this is a concern that we want, we want to bring to the board's attention, and we'll continue to evaluate to see if there's any progress being made for these disparities. And I'm sure you've probably looked at them. So, they don't look good. The numbers don't look good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes our public comments. Thank you. Well, at this time, we'll now move into our next agenda item, which is the approval of our minutes for the September 5th regular Board of Commissioners meeting. Are there any changes or revisions to those minutes? Hearing none, we call for a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous approval. We're now moving to the Commissioners' comment section of the agenda. Are there any other Commissioners that would like to make any comments? Let's see, Commissioner Prince?
Just me.
Yes.
This is just a public announcement. We're having a ribbon cutting at Mr. King's house this Saturday, and that'd be the 22nd, 69 McDonough Street, at 10 o'clock that Saturday. What we've done is we've completely renovated a veteran's home, and unfortunately, the veteran passed while we were doing his home. So it's kind of a sad experience, but his wife will still be able to enjoy the home, and what we did was take a house that was pretty much uninhabitable, and it's a rather nice house now. It actually has a kitchen and a bathroom that works, and central heat and air, and it was all done through volunteer work. So again, that is with American Legion Post 516. It will be 10 o'clock Saturday at 69 McDonough Street.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Prince? Any other comments from Commissioners? Okay. We'll now move into our county managers' comments.
Good evening, Board and Chair. I do have a couple of updates that I didn't want to provide to the board. As you all are aware, since our last meeting, I did want you all to again be aware and for the public to be aware, that our project manager for our class and compensation study did pass away right after our board meeting, or I was notified of it right after our last board meeting. I know we've had a lot of conversation regarding the status of the class and compensation study, and there are certainly a lot of, there's a lot of information that has been disseminated, and so I wanted to make sure that, one, the board is aware that we are still on track, but out of respect for the consultant and his family, we have given them an opportunity to certainly grieve the loss of Mr. Chip King. This afternoon, I did have an opportunity to meet with the individual that will be kind of stepping in to get us to the finish line. We are still with the Archer Company, we just have a different project manager, and it's unfortunate that Mr. King did pass away because it was sudden, but we do understand that there is still a sense of urgency to get this class and compensation study completed. The consultant has told me that they're working expeditiously to make sure that they do get something to us, and we just wanted the board to be aware that it's certainly our goal to present something to you all in mid-October. I know that initially, we were looking to have something to the board at the first meeting in September, or the second meeting in September, and that just hasn't worked in our favor, but wanted you all to be aware that we are working on it. We're hopeful that we will have a draft report available for your review in the coming weeks. Actually, the class and comp study will also include a policy, and so while you all will receive a listing of what the compensations will be, it will also include a policy that we can use going forward. So I just wanted the board to be aware of that. Also, wanted to update the board that our deputy county manager in consultation with our police chiefs, not only just our police chief, but the police chief within all the municipalities, is working on a public safety task force. There's been a lot of questions in terms of public safety, making sure that we are not only being involved within the unincorporated areas, but also within our municipalities as well. And so that's one thing that Brad will be bringing back to the board in terms of some of the steps that they're taking in some of the meetings that they've held, but wanted you all to be aware of that as well. And then finally, I know during the board meeting two weeks ago, there were some questions regarding our budget, and I do believe that I committed to provide an update to the board just where we are now that we are about two months into our FY19 budget. So at this time, I'm going to ask David Smith, our budget director, to come forward, and he has four or five slides that he's just going to go over just to give you all a brief update. And then the first meeting in October, you all will get a more detailed report. And the clerk is handing out the presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board and the Clayton, Henry County community, sorry. One of my goals that I've been tasked with is to begin to give you monthly reports, and so I've endeavored to do that. I'm beginning with, and I know that one of the Commissioners has also requested some information on the enterprise funds, and we're going to begin to distribute that information as well going forward. But for tonight, I just wanted to present a few slides regarding our general fund. And just to let you know, for the month of July, sales and use taxes only are accounting for 63 percent of our revenues right now, with our charges for services at 22 percent. Now, the logic behind that is we haven't sent out or started to receive our property taxes in, which typically starts around the November, December timeframe, and we just sent out those property tax bills this month. Next slide, please. So you really can't see this on the big screen, but what it shows is that we're trending pretty much on budget in terms of our revenues and expenditures, lagging behind in revenues, where we're only collecting about 2 percent, so we should be at about 8 percent for both revenues and expenditures. We're at 2 percent for revenues and 6 percent for our expenditures. And it shows for this particular month in July that we recently are closing, we've utilized 6.5 million, I'm going to use, of our fund balance. Graphically, this shows how we're looking. So we're still trending fine, where it shows revenues and expenditures against the budget So what does this mean for fund balance? We haven't audited or closed our fiscal year-end yet, as of June 30th of 2018, but we anticipate that that number should be around 71 million, taking into account our July revenue and expenditures, and we utilized the majority of some, a part of that fund balance, and so we estimate as of the end of July that we should be at about 65 million for our fund balance for July. Are there any questions that the board may have?
Okay. We've heard the presentation. Are there any questions from the board? None at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the report. Anything else, county manager?
No.
Okay. So we'll now move into our upcoming meetings and events. Regarding our Board of Commissioners, we will have our October 2nd Board of Commissioners meeting at 9:00 a.m., and then on October 16th at 6:30 p.m., we will have our regular Board of Commissioners meeting at 6:30 p.m. Regarding our SPOS 5 committee meetings, there is one scheduled Thursday, September the 20th at 6:30 p.m. at J.P. Mosley Recreation Center in the community room, and it's in District 4, and then on Thursday, October 4th at 6:30 p.m. at the Fairview Recreation Center in the community room in District 5. So at this time, if there's no other business for the board, we now call for a motion to adjourn.
We'll move.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor? Unanimous approval. Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.